Good evening and welcome to the Fridley School Board Business Meeting, Tuesday, August 18th, 2020. We would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, can I get, um, I would like to bring a motion for approval of the agenda and seconded motions and resolutions. Moved by Stark, seconded by Adam. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to take this moment to do a spotlight on recognition. I would like to make a statement. Tonight, we would like to share a statement of recognition for Mary Kay Delvo, a former Fridley School Board member. Mary Kay joined the Fridley School Board in 2012. As a board member, she held multiple roles, including Director, Vice Chair, and most recently Board Chair. She served as the District Board Representative in our educational partner organizations, such as the Association of Metropolitan School Districts and the Intermediate District, School District 916. Her knowledge of the district and the community was invaluable to the district's efforts of engaging its community. A strong champion of students, Mary Kay's priority was equity and supporting the district's administration in prioritizing opportunities that helped prepare students for college and careers. She was very proud of the district's implementation of the IB Career Related Program. This program allows high school students to receive certifications in two programs while still in high school. A Fridley parent, Mary Kay celebrated her son Lucas's graduation from Fridley High School this past May. We want to thank Mary Kay for her many years of service to the Fridley students, family, staff, and community as a Fridley School Board member. Her contribution to the work of the school board is recognized and appreciated.
Chair Perito, may I add a couple of things?
Please do.
Thank you. I would also like to thank Mary Kay Delvo for her time and experience that she gave to Fridley Public Schools. So, good evening Chair Perito and Board members. I would really like to take time out this evening and recognize the tremendous amount of work and planning that our directors, administrators, IB coordinators, ILs, Transportation, Nutritional Services, Buildings and Grounds Technology, Community Ed, Enrollment, our Executive Secretary and members of our Bargaining Unit representatives have done to brainstorm, build, and create a strong and rigorous educational program that would meet the needs of our students and community during this COVID process. I would like to say there has been a need for them to be adaptable and to be flexible is just an understatement. Our teams have been planning, creating, and building a system that would usually take a year to two years to create. So while I can't take their stress away, I would like to say thank, I would like to thank them from the bottom of my heart. And we say that we couldn't do it without them. And Fridley Strong has never meant more today than it has now. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I would like to have our newest board member, Gao Nu, step forward while I welcome her to the Fridley School Board. She doesn't want to be up front. Up front and center. It is an honor that you were appointed to guide the education of our community's students. As you recite the oath, oh, I know it's hot. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a Director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of the students and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. As a board member, your leadership and contribution to the Fridley Schools is valuable. We will support and champion the district's vision of becoming the best place to learn and the best place to work. Furthermore, as a world-class community of learners, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district towards fulfilling our mission, which is to be challenging and inspiring to our students and our community, to become caring and knowledgeable, lifelong learners who inquire to take action to create a better world. Welcome to the Fridley School Board.
Thank you.
Oh, she has something, she has something to read. Okay.
Okay, so I'll raise my right hand. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of School Board Member of Independent School District Number 14 to the best of my judgment and ability.
We will move on to Superintendent and Staff Reports.
Board Chair Perito, Superintendent Dr. Heil, School Board Members, and Laurie Handler. I am very pleased today to present the annual report video. Every year, we, we kind of represent, we present to our community of events that have been happening in our school year for the entire school year. So, we had a very unusual school year, as you all know. We started it really well. We had a campaign, we elected board officials, we went to a referendum that was very successful. And in the middle of that, everything changed. And I think all of us in here fully appreciate the fact that our community supported us, allowed us to raise additional revenue to maintain programs and services for students because that was so evident this spring, that that support is clearly needed. When we were issuing devices to students, we were providing meals to students, and we continue to give them education and instruction during a very difficult and challenging time in our community. So typically, spring is usually the time that we hold so many wonderful celebration of student achievement. When you see this video, those achievements still took place, they just looked a little different. And I am so proud to be in a school district that very quickly and very rapidly shifted gears, made accommodations and adjustment, and made it work. It was hard work, but I think all of us are very proud of the fact that we still stayed connected with our students, we stayed connected with our community, and our community came in full force to support our students, including our graduating seniors. So, Mr. Weber, who is behind the scenes, does an amazing job of creating this annual review in videography. He has done this for many years, and today you're going to see his latest work. So, thank you.
Welcome to Fridley Public Schools 2019-2020 Year in Review. It is because of community support that our district's legacy is rich and strong. In November 2019, the Fridley community came through and overwhelmingly supported a new operational levy. This year, that support has never been more appreciated. Because of our voters, we have been able to continue providing competitive programs that help prepare students for college and careers. Our students benefit from opportunities that promote support in academics and beyond. And having current technology keeps us all connected in a global economy. Our community's support of students and schools has enabled many outstanding successes, whether in academics, leadership roles, the arts, creative writing, athletics, or in competition with other young learners. Whether individually or in teams, our students and staff continued to demonstrate the characteristics of the international baccalaurate as learners and citizens, and proudly represented the district with honor and integrity. In June of 2020, Fridley congratulated 236 seniors as they took part in a virtual commencement ceremony. Over a third of these graduates attained honors designations. Our community came together to celebrate the amazing class of 2020, recognizing their hard work and showing their Fridley spirit. Fridley Proud, Fridley Strong. The COVID-19 global pandemic created unprecedented challenges for families, communities, and school districts. We are proud to say that Fridley Public Schools rose to the challenge. Teachers continued educating our students via distance learning and checking in with them to ensure their support needs were tended to. The district distributed computer devices to families needing them, as well as art supplies, books, and writing materials. District operations continued as Nutritional Services staff prepared meals for students. Custodians cleaned buildings from top to bottom, and administrators convened to monitor information and plan for the coming school year. Despite the many challenges, the school district worked very hard to maintain the education and care of our most valued customers, our students. As we move into the coming school year, there is an even greater reliance on health and safety resources and technology to support education in the district. We will follow safety guidelines as set forth by the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education. All Fridley staff are working diligently on preparations to safely welcome our students back to classrooms. While starting a new school year during a pandemic creates uncertainties, our district remains committed to providing an education and support services to our students, families, and community. We thank our Fridley community for all its support and compassion over the past school year and look forward to our partnership helping grow young minds in the coming year.
That was really great. Thank you so much to David for putting that together. Now, I would like to invite Mr. Petrofsky up to talk about our reopening presentation.
Well, good evening Board Chair Perito, School Board Members, and Dr. Heil. Um, as you know, we had a directive from the State of Minnesota to prepare three learning models for the fall. An in-person instruction model, a hybrid model, which would include in-person instruction and e-learning, and then a full-time distance learning model. So I'm going to just take a couple of minutes and explain each, and then sort of talk about a little bit where we're going to be at this fall. You know, it's our hope that sometime during the school year, we're going to be able to invite our kids back at one level, hopefully elementary, middle, high school, something, four to five days a week, and resume school as we knew it back in February and January of last year. You know, it's possible that we could have them back four days a week and take Wednesdays as a deep cleaning day, following some of the protocols that we're following now. Through all of this, families are going to have an option to choose an online option that's full-time, and then also through all these options we'll be following and adhering to Minnesota Department of Health guidelines. So, our hybrid model, we titled our Fridley Flex Hybrid, and there really are two components of that model. There's an in-person component, which has our kids coming back to school two days a week. And we have affectionately called those two groups Tiger Stripes and Tiger Paws. Tiger Stripes coming on Mondays and Tuesdays, and Paws on Thursdays and Fridays. Wednesday will be seen as a check and connect day, and then, and also a deep cleaning day. And then the three days that they're not in school, they'll be engaging in distance learning activities that have been facilitated by their primary grade teacher or their subject area teacher. And then for all of that learning, we will be using Google Classroom as a, as a platform. For students and families that select the full-time distance learning option, we have something called the Fridley Online Academy. And for our students in grades K through 5, they'll participate in a rigorous, standards-based program that's instructed by a primary grade level teacher. And this is a full-time option, and it'll mirror the content of the Fridley Hybrid model. And then grades, in grade 6 through 12, a new to Fridley Schools this year is the Edge Newty Program. And this is a full-time, credit-based, online experience. And Edge Newty's platform allows students to move through it independently, at their own pace. And we will have their progress monitored by what we're calling teacher mentor coaches. And those are licensed Fridley educators that'll be working with those, those kids. So, some staffing considerations and structures as we've worked through this year, we've had to maintain some pretty great flexibility as we've worked to staff the different models. And then within each, the hybrid and the distance learning model, there's a number of different staffing scenarios that we've had to be creative with in order to utilize all the staff. And some of that stems from the, some of the restrictions that staff are going to be under as they work their way through this year. And I, I think the bottom line is we're just trying to figure out the best way to serve all kids in, on all situations. We're excited to announce too, that the week of September 8th, we're calling Every Connection Matters Week. It's going to be a time where we do some pretty serious orientation sessions with families and kids, getting them ready as we can, as much, as best we can for the new year, panning out Chromebooks, orientation sessions in small group with fam, with families coming in and doing some parent education with technology as, as well. All with the idea of building connections. I mean, one of my bullets says connections, connections, connections. So we'll be working on that as we work our way through the year. Any questions? Thank you for allowing me to present that information tonight.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to our business action items along with the first resolution to accept gifts. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes guidelines for the acceptance of gifts to the district, and whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts received by the school district. The following persons donated to the Fridley Public Schools for a total of $2,857. United Methodist Church for the Back to School Resource Fair. Fridley Lions for the Back to School Resource Fair. The following persons donated to the Fridley Middle School for a total of $20. Stephanie Sharp Caisha. The following person donated to Stevenson Elementary for a total of $100. David Reinisch for music programs. And do I have a motion to accept the gifts?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. And since this is a resolution, I will be calling the roll. Adam?
Aye.
Carnap?
Aye.
Perito?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Thornton?
Aye.
And Jeong?
Aye.
The resolution has passed. Next, I'd like to bring up Mr. Hoffman to talk about Capitol Project Levy.
Good evening Chair Perito, Members of the School Board, Superintendent Heil. As we've talked over the past several months, and we currently have a Capitol Projects Levy. That was approved back in 2011, and that is used to fund deferred maintenance needs for the district. Our current needs by far exceed the funding we have, so this helps kind of keep closing that gap. The other big piece of this is technology. So this is what's funding all the devices within our district for our staff and our students. So this levy is set to expire here in a couple of years. So this, tonight is the, as we've talked, we want to go to the voters this fall to ask for an extension, a renewal. So it's not an increase in taxes, it's just a continuation of what's already in place. So tonight, the, the step would be to pass the resolution to call the special election this November to renew this Capitol Projects Levy for another 10 years.
Wonderful, thank you. And can I get a motion? Would anyone like to? First by Carnap, second?
Second.
By Adam. And we will again call the roll. Adam?
Aye.
Carnap?
Aye.
Perito?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Thornton?
Aye.
And Jeong?
Aye.
And Mr. Hoffman, it is you again.
All right, we have one other resolution tonight. We're periodically monitoring our outstanding debt, the bonds that we have outstanding, because every now and then there's opportunities to refund those obligations and take advantage of lower interest rates. So we do have a bond issuance, our 2012 B bonds that are up for being able to be refunded. And based on current analysis with our financial advisors, it would be advantageous for us to do so. These bonds have been refunded a couple of times already. They were initially issued in 1996. So the first reissue saved us, ah, I lost my paper. Several, ah, there we go. The first time we refunded, we saved 2.2 million. We refunded again in 2012 and saved another 1.8 million. And now with this refunding, we're anticipating saving almost $250,000. This isn't money that the district gets to spend, this is saving our taxpayers' money. So this is reducing your tax bill in the future years that, you know, that is paying off these bonds. So with this resolution, this is calling for the sale of the refunding bonds. The sale would actually take place. The board would authorize or approve the sale itself in October. The bonds will be issued in November to refund the bonds then in February. So the first step is to call for this, the, call for the sale of the General Election School Building Refunding Bonds Series 2020A, which would refund the 2012 B School Building Refunding Bonds. I'll turn it over to you unless you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay. And who would like to make a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Stark, seconded by Thornton. We will call the roll. Adam?
Aye.
Carnap?
Aye.
Perito?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Thornton?
Aye.
Jeong?
Aye.
Any other discussion? And then that resolution passes. Thank you. And next, we'll do our consent agenda, which is all of our routine action items, including minutes of the regular work board meeting, work session that was held on July 21st, 2020. The work session held on August 4th, 2020. Monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, terminations, resignations, retirements. The memorandum of agreement with the Independent School District 14 and the Fridley Education Association regarding pay due to teachers and sub-teachers' absences. The 2021 rate for private transportation contracts, and the 2021 school calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion moved.
Motion by Adam?
Second.
Seconded by Carnap. Any discussion? And then that is approved. Next, we would like to move on to our written information. Laura Seifert Hurtling.
Good evening Board Chair Perito, Board Members, and Superintendent Heil. Tonight, I present to you for a first reading Board Policy 695, Tele-related Services. This policy is due to what we've been hearing tonight with the COVID pandemic, and it will allow us to provide related services such as occupational therapy, physical therapy, mental health, school psychology, speech-language pathology, and social work via teletherapy and teleservices while the pandemic is continuing throughout the, we'll see how long it continues, I guess. So it's a policy that puts in place and allows us to do those types of services online.
Any questions? Any questions? Thank you so much. We'll look forward to seeing that first reading. And next, we'd like reports from school board members. Ms. Stark, from the Metro 916 Board Meeting.
We discussed the disability non-discrimination policy, the social media policy, and the technology policy specifically related to COVID. The main discussion was how to achieve success in this COVID world that we're living in. We discussed all sorts of groups and planning strategies that 916 is going through to keep staff and teachers, students, and families successful. They sent out a survey in five languages and had over 400 responses on how to improve their e-learning for students. And over 277 staff members responded since May. And leadership is currently reviewing those surveys. Most of the conversation really focused on MDE and MDH and how to implement those protocols. The Superintendent also discussed various return-to-work teams, cabinets, that sort of thing, to help her in making sure that all of the COVID protocols are put into place. They did create a website for staff specifically focused on a timeline, what it looks like going back to work, info on safety measures in HR FAQ page. And there are regular staff emails communicating the most up-to-date information. There's also a family hotline with staff available to answer questions, and the hotline information pops up when you first visit the website. There's also a tech training page on the website that covers everything from powering up devices to how to use Gmail. They also had the school resource officers attend and discuss the work that they're doing to build relationships with the families and the kids at 916. And since they won't be in school, they will be making, um, ah, I'm sorry, I'm reading from my phone and my kid keeps texting me. This is like real life right here. The SROs are visiting the kids at home to make sure that they're doing okay. And one of the main things that they wanted to talk about there was in 2017, there were 47 interactions between students and the school resource officers, and they were able to bring it down to only one in 2020. So there was some success with relationship building there. So, um, the more, I guess, typical aspect of the meeting was passing a lease extension for the White Bear Lake Building.
Wonderful, thank you. And AM SD meeting, would you like to talk? Okay, Dr. Heil?
Thank you, thank you Chair Perito and School Board Members. I'll share notes or summary from the August 14th Association of Metropolitan School District meeting. We had two speakers that evening, then morning, excuse me, Commissioner Mary Catherine Ricker and Deputy Commissioner Heather Mueller from MDE. And basically, they were just sharing information around the importance of communication and how seriously that the Minnesota Department of Ed is taking that information, because they know there's a lot of fear that is out there, and they want to be able to provide our community with the correct information. As well as they spoke about support for our regional support team, and it's a support from MDE and MDH that'll work closely with school districts. And it will consist of a testing coordinator and two epidemiologists from MDH, whom we will work together whenever the district has questions or concerns, especially if there's our, if there are any positive cases, they'll help us work with how we'll go about contract, excuse me, contact tracing, how that would go about occurring. We also had information on the new coronavirus funding that needs to be spent by the end of December. This money can be used for anything to help meet the needs of our students technology-wise, health and safety-wise, health and safety-wise, learning plan-wise for us to be successful during the pandemic. Also, Secretary of State Steve Simon spoke. He spoke just a few days after the primary and said the primary went very well, but was very concerned about the number of people that would be coming out for the general election due to COVID and the small spaces available for people to vote, so he highly suggested for people to consider from voting at home. And then if they were concerned at all about absentee ballots, they can also just actually go to the place and hand-deliver that ballot in a car, or walk up, or bike. As well as they also are looking, considering they're in need of election judges or poll person, so you are able to go to Minnesota.Votes.org to be able to look up that information. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to just let everybody know about future important dates. The Fridley Schools Board Meeting will be September 1st, 2020, with our work session at 5:30. Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will take place September 2nd, 2020, at 6 o'clock. AMSD Board Meeting, September 11th, at 7:00 AM. The next Fridley Public Schools Board Meeting on September 15th, with the work session 5:30, open forum at 7, and our business meeting at 7:30. And the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting will be September 16th at 6:15 PM. And Schools for Equity in Education, September 18th, 9:00 AM. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Thornton?
Second.
Seconded by Adam. And we are adjourned if there's no more discussion? Everybody's in agreement? 8:03. Thank you.